February 22nd, 7:00 PM. Southborough Planning Board pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law 30A18. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website at For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. First item on the agenda is a discussion item. Master Plan Committee update. This is Latrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no news since the last time we met, but the next meeting of the Master Plan Committee is March 10th.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 96 Mount Vickery Road, definitive subdivision plan approval. This is continued from December 14th, January 11th, February 8th. And the public hearing for the same 96 Mount Vickery Road, lower impacted development special permit continued from December 14th, January 11th, and February 8th. So on the February 8th public hearing, that was just the only action taken there was to continue that, continue the hearing with no action to tonight. I'll turn it over to the town planner. Mr. Mills?
I just want to state for the record, I'm going to recuse myself from this topic.
Very good. Karina?
Okay, so after the February 8th planning board meeting, the applicant requested to be continued to this evening's planning board meeting and a which was done in the interim. We received on February 18th a third submission with revised informations, plans dated February 18th, '21, and other updated documentation in response to Fosse-Niall-Cummins. Those were distributed to the Planning Board, to Fosse-Niall, and to the Town Departments the end of last week, February 18th. In the interim, the applicant and their team requested that they continue tonight's meeting automatically to the March 8th for both public hearings, the subdivision, definitive subdivision and the lid. And then the lid action deadline is February 26th. So March 8th puts us past that date. So they also provided us with an extension request form that they signed asking for the lid to be continued to March 8th. And then that the board shall have to reach a decision on the matters shall be extended to instead of February 26th. It would be April 16th would be the action deadline. On the form that you saw, it does say April 12th, but that's the actual, that's a planning board meeting Monday. So we add through the Friday. So if that's too far out, I think it's safe. We can always, you can always close and vote sooner than that, but that's the date that, the week of that, April 12th is when the applicant requested a action deadline.
Well, that's their request. We either have them revise the request to the 16th or we deny their request.
Well, they won't be attending. They asked me if they had to attend, and I said, no. And I said, I would express that it would go to April 16th as the proper date. They just thought that was the meeting date. They didn't understand the that, you know, there's the continuation to the planning board meeting date, and then there's the typical four days added for planning board action in case there's a snowstorm or something like that.
They didn't give you that permission in writing, Karina?
No. They didn't.
So let's do this. Let's vote on what they have in writing, which is to continue the hearing to March 8th and the approval period for the lid to April 12th.
Yeah.
And then on March 8th, we can change it again to April 16th.
Right, because they'll have, they'll need an extension request for the definitive subdivision at that public hearing as well if it doesn't close on that day.
Sub move.
Okay. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to continue this public hearing without any action for both the lower impact development and the subdivision to March 8th at 7:10 PM and to extend the approval period to April 12th. Any discussion?
Also, Don, the lid should be to
Oh, 7.
Yeah, we have 7:05 and 7:10. So the subdivision to 7:05 and the lid to 7:10 respectively.
Well, their request here says 7:10.
Where are you reading?
The request.
That's for the lid, right. The lid would be 7:10. So this extension request, this request for continuation, extension of public hearing is just to extend the lid, continue the lid and extend the the date that the board shall have to reach a decision on the matter. But it's only for the lid.
For the extended approval period.
Correct.
But it also says the hearings shall be continued to March 8th, 2021 at 7:10 PM.
Yeah, just for the lid, though. You have to make a separate motion, I think, for the definitive subdivision to 7:05 because we're running two separate public hearings. Maybe I'm reading that wrong.
Well, it says the hearings.
No, that's if there are two. But if you look further up on the form, it just says special permit lower impact development. That's when, you know, the form, sometimes they're both being extended, but in this case, this definitive subdivision doesn't need to be extended yet. But they can both go to 7:10. We'll just, we won't have a 7:05 public hearing start for the next meeting.
I think we should go to 7:10 for both.
Okay.
We'll find something to do between 7 and 7:10, or we won't start until 7:05.
Okay.
So the motion is to continue the hearings to March 8th at 7:10 PM and the approval period for the lid to April 12th. Is that the motion?
Indeed, it is, Mr. Chairman.
And that's been seconded.
Yes.
Any discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Well, it's posted for 7:15. And I got 7:10, so we have to wait five minutes. Let's move on to, you want to do the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting of February 8th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I had one comment. It's on line 147 and 148. Do you have that, Kate?
Yeah, give me one second to pull it up, Don.
Okay.
Okay, 147?
Yeah, could you read this that Mr. Morris said or something?
Mr. Morris, Mr. Morris explained that the design guidelines will require a separate public hearing and should be included along with the proposed bylaw for town meeting vote.
Is that the way the rest of the board remembers what I said? I'm not sure if, if I said it, I'm not sure if it's right that the design guidelines would require a separate public hearing unless we were to revise them after they were approved? Because the public hearing for the downtown district includes the design guidelines. We'll see that a little later tonight.
Sorry, one more time, the line number on that, Don?
147. So, I mean, just by reading that sentence, it sounds like we have to have a public hearing for the warrant article standalone, and then another public hearing for the design guidelines. And if, and right now, the warrant article includes the design guidelines as part of the public hearing. So if that passes, then we have a new downtown district in the code that also links it to the design guidelines. Then at a future date, if we want to change the design guidelines, we don't have to go to town meeting, but we should hold a public hearing to let the people know what the planning board or others intend to revise within the design guidelines.
So you were saying that basically after the zoning was changed at town meeting, in the future, we would have a public hearing for that? That's what you meant?
I think so.
Yeah, that's how I remember it. You weren't saying we needed another public hearing now before town meeting?
Correct.
Right. Agreed.
So how would you change that, Kate?
I don't know the answer to that right now.
We'll let you, we'll let you think about it. We'll come back to it.
You want me to edit that? I will edit it and then just have Karina check it? Does that work? Before I post it?
You know what? You could, can I make a little suggestion?
Sure, please.
You could, if you actually just, it says, it says require, require a separate public hearing?
Yeah.
We could even just change that to a future
Oh, there you go.
public hearing.
Sure.
And strike and should be included along with the proposed bylaw for town meeting vote. That'd be my suggested change.
That sounds like what I said.
So Don, it will just say, Mr. Morris explained that the design guidelines will require a future public hearing, period. How's that?
If, if if revisions are required, if revisions, if future revisions are required, something like that.
Okay. You want me to read it back?
Yes.
Mr. Morris explained that the design guidelines will require a future public hearing if future revisions are required.
Any other changes, comments, questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as revised? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes. Sorry. Stein, yes.
Latrell, yeah.
Houlihan, yes.
Marty, you should have jumped in front of Mimi. I see it is now 7:16. We're allowed to open the public hearing for the annual town meeting warrant article, amend section 174-10, site plan approval. I'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice. It should be noted that the, there was a single notice in the paper for four warrant articles. We're going to read the public hearing notice portion that just deals with 174-10. Also, I believe at our last meeting for sure, the planning board discussed the leaving open these public hearings, perhaps even right up to town meeting. We know things can change, and I guess if the, if there's an overwhelming public desire to close the hearings, we would consider that. But I just want to, unless somebody disagrees, I believe it's the planning board's intention to continue this public hearing and the other three right up and, right up to town meeting. If we all have that feeling at this time, and I again say things can change, then what, the way I'd like to run these public hearings, open to suggestions, of course, would be to allow the participants, every participant to speak once. And those, those speakers, if they come on and restate what a previous speaker has said, we may ask that, acknowledge that and ask to move on. There's, you know, there's four public hearings tonight, and we want to try to make sure we have everybody heard at least once. But let the public know that this isn't your only chance. There's going to be multiple opportunities right up till town meeting for, for the public to speak to, request revisions, so on. So if we don't, don't feel as though we have to get it all done tonight. I want to just make sure that we give these adequate time, but we also keep our planning board, overall planning board meeting in a relative, you know, not, not too deep into the night. So I'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notes.
Okay, and I'm going to read the public hearing notice section for the subject at hand. So when the next public hearing, then I'll read the next section.
Yep.
All right, this is a public hearing notice dated February 3rd, 2021. The Town of Southborough, pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, February 22nd, 2021, beginning at 7:15 PM via remote Zoom meeting. In accordance with orders issued by the governor during the current state of emergency, this meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to And 7:15 PM, annual town meeting warrant article to amend section 174-10, site plan approval zoning bylaw. The revision will update the site plan approval process by giving jurisdiction to the planning board for minor site plan review as opposed to the site plan review committee. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed by appointment in the planning board office, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772. All documents can also be viewed online at https://www.southboroughtown.com/planningdashboard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should appear at the time and place designated.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Latrell, but it's now 7:20. And around 7:25, we would, if this public hearing is still ongoing, we'll take a break from this public hearing and enter into the public hearing for the downtown section, downtown district at 7:00, so that we start that at 7:30. Mrs. Latrell?
Okay, the reason that this came out, there was a new town bylaw that was voted in a couple of years ago that requires any members of appointed committees, any voting members of appointed committees to be town residents. So the question was, can we continue with the site plan review committee with the members of which are town employees, not necessarily residents? And we asked town council about that, and he said, although it was the ultimate decision of the planning board, that removing the site plan review committee and bringing all site plan under the jurisdiction of the planning board would solve several problems, one of which was an open meeting law concern that had gone back many years with the site plan review committee. It would create consistent compliance and it would allow open public access to all decision-making, as well as bring it in line with the new bylaw section 9-23. So basically, all site plan review would come before the, the planning board. Minor site plan review wouldn't require a hearing and notification and all the steps that a major site plan review would require, but it would be before the planning board instead of the site plan review committee.
Thank you. Sarah, are you able to put that revised, the proposed warrant article on the screen?
Sure. Don, while Sarah's doing that, I also want to point out that back June 9th of 2020, when the public hearings closed for this bylaw change prior to the last annual town meeting that got pushed out for these warrant articles, the planning board had prepared a report for section 174-10, site plan approval, as specified in the signed annual warrant dated March 28, 2020, that the planning board voted unanimously, unanimously, 5 to 0 in support of this article at that time. So I just wanted to point out that that report did exist during, for the previous public hearing.
And the article, the wording of the article hasn't changed since then, right?
Correct. And you can
Are there any questions or comments? We'll open it up to the public. Anybody out there in the public interested?
I don't see any hands raised. And we currently have 15 attendees.
So let's, let's have a motion to continue this hearing to a point in time tonight right after the downtown district public hearing concludes.
No move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion hearing, none to suspend until after downtown district hearing? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Thank you. Karina, if you could now, the reason we're doing this is because our consultant, Judy Barrett, is only available tonight from 7:30 to a hard close at 8 o'clock. So we want to take advantage of her attendance. So if you could read the public hearing notice for the downtown district?
Okay, can I just ask one thing? Since it's 7:25, we do have a public hearing scheduled at 7:20. We can do that after without saying anything about it now? We have the ZBA Special Permit Requirement Amendment at 7:20.
You're right, we do have to say that, that the public hearing for 7:20 and 7:25 will immediately follow the
Public hearing.
Site plan public hearing, which will be following immediately after the downtown district public hearing. Again, the reason is for the availability of our consultant. Iran, Karina, read the public hearing notice for downtown.
February 3rd, 2021, public hearing notice, Town of Southborough pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, February 22nd, 2021, beginning at 7:15 PM via remote Zoom meeting. In accordance with orders issued by the governor during the current state of emergency, this meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to And for 7:30 PM, we have the annual town meeting warrant article to create section 174-8.4.1 Downtown District to establish a new zone within the current Business Village District for the downtown area. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed by appointment in the Board of Selectmen office, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772. All documents can also be viewed online at www.southboroughtown.com/planningboard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language could appear at the time, should appear at the time and place designated. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you. So Karina, just give us a quick update as to how we got to this point tonight.
Sure. One second. I don't have a lot of room. So I'll start, say something briefly, and then Sarah, you can add if you have more information on this. So similar to the other warrant articles, work on this started previously. And over the interim, the Board of Selectmen provided a draft bylaw from that was prepared by the Economic Development Committee. So they provided that to us, and statute requires that the public hearing process happen through the planning board. And I can tell you that we have a current draft that was dated January 19th, 2020, at which the planning board had a discussion on February 11th to go through the draft bylaw language, section by section, to which I incorporated those comments and provided them back to town administrator, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Healy, Lisa Bracchio, who represents the Board of Selectmen on this project, John Wood, the Chair of the EDC, Julie Connolly, who then provided it to Judy Barrett and gave us some feedback on some of the questions that we had quite, you know, we had, we needed some clarification on. With that also came a set of design guidelines that was prepared by the EDC, which is dated November 2020, version one, which the planning board will eventually also review piece by piece. Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, no problem.
Anything you can think of?
No, I think for, for this discussion, that's a perfect setup.
Don, did I miss anything? Is there anything you want me to bring attention to? I know that the EDC posted a joint meeting agenda for this evening, and there are attendees. We, it appears there's several attendees that are related to this topic, this public hearing. So, Don, we can't hear you.
Why don't we open it up to the, an EDC member, is Julie there? Or a selectman, Marty, he's there? Do we want to go through this, these comments from Judy? And if so, who will guide us through that?
Let's see, Lisa just raised her hand.
Sarah, do you see Judy and the attendees?
Judy is a promoted panelist.
Oh, she is there, okay, excellent.
Lisa just raised her hand. Lisa, can you hear us?
I can. I just wanted to also say that Judy is here, and obviously, she could certainly answer any questions or further clarifications on the document that's in front of you.
So, Don, I thought it might work if we go through the document, this, the draft downtown district proposed bylaw language, and not focus on, you know, the formatting or the typos, or, you know, clarifying the articles, but on the context questions.
Sure.
So, on the screen, the red is what the planning board's comments were, and the light blue represents Judy giving some quick responses that she was able to today.
Judy, are you there?
Indeed, I'm here. How are you, Don?
Good, thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
No problem.
I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but I don't understand how to take care of that sentence.
Which one?
The first, the first one that's highlighted, it says, offering short-term, monthly, or longer lease, and we have "or rental," or, and you say, "not a zoning issue." How should we, what should we do with that sentence?
I don't know what it needs to, I don't know what needs to be changed, Don.
I didn't hear you, what?
I don't know what needs to be changed. It's just short-term, monthly, or longer lease rental periods for self-employed people.
Oh, so leave the word rental, add the word "or rental"?
Well, you don't need to. It's not a zoning issue, but if you want it added, I guess it's up to you guys.
Any comments on that?
Yeah, I just want to be clear that the original language said, "short-term, monthly, or longer lease periods for self-employed." And there was a question the planning board asked, shouldn't it say, "longer lease or rental"?
It's not a zoning issue. It's not a zoning issue. I, I would not, I worry about, some of these comments, I think, need discussion, but stuff like this, I think, is just, people are going to start to spin their wheels, frankly. This is not a zoning issue. All lease means is that someone has control over a space, and you don't get into a co-work center without some kind of written agreement.
So you're saying "or rental" would not be necessary?
It's not necessary.
And Don, it's Lisa again. If I could just clarify one point, too. So this was also reviewed by Adam Costa, who was the attorney, the zoning attorney that was brought in to review this, and him and Judy had gone through this as well.
Right. So Adam went through all this, and then he suggested some changes, which I made. But it's been through a legal review already.
Well, sometimes lawyers understand things a certain way, and then planning board members and the public understand them a different way. And we're trying to get it, clear it up, so we don't need lawyers.
Understood. All I'm saying is that this is not a zoning issue, and I don't think you need to make any changes to that paragraph.
Let's move on to the next one.
Facade means the exterior side of a building. If you then want to regulate something with respect to a certain side, you do that in the regulations, but the definition itself is the exterior side of a building.
Which includes the front.
Any side of a building.
Well, I think, Judy, what happened here is when it said, "the exterior side of a building", it sounded like it was the side of the building, not the outside face of
Okay.
wall. So it was, it was confusing. That's why I wrote in there, is it the face of exterior walls? Or is it, like, could there be a little added explanation? So it's very crystal clear that exterior side of a building, that it doesn't mean side of a building, but it means all sides.
Why don't you say, "any exterior side of a building"?
I think the confusion still comes in with side of a building. So we all kind of understand it now, but when somebody goes to read this from the general public, when they start to prepare to submit something, I think it's going to cause a question. And everyone thinks, well, maybe it shouldn't, but it does. It's just not clear. So-
But there isn't any other way to define it. It's the outs, it's the side, it's the, any side of a building. It could be the front facade, it could be the rear facade, it could be a side facade. How you then work with that in the zoning is a function of what you want it to do. But facade means it's any side of a building. So I, I'm not going to encourage you to change this.
So is it the face of the exterior walls?
It's any-
Correct?
It's any exterior side of a building.
Face of the exterior wall. So it's the face, right? It's not the, it's not the building itself, it's like, what's on the outside of the building all around.
It's the exterior, yes.
Well, that's all I have to say. If the planning board has, doesn't feel it's clear.
Well, that's up to you guys. I'm just telling you what it means. And so if you-
Put the word "side" out of there, and said, "the exterior of a building."
Well, that could be the roof.
Exterior walls of the building?
If you, whatever you think you need to do to, to make it clear to you.
Well, we want to have something that, you know, the EDC and the Board of Selectmen find acceptable as well. So I'm just trying to find a word here, that, because that word "side" just made it sound like it's just, you know, it's like exterior front of the building, exterior side of a building. I, I mean, I know what you're saying, and I understand the definition, but it wasn't clear. I don't think it's clear to the public.
Okay.
So.
I'll defer to the EDC.
Okay.
Let's move on to the next one.
Okay, this was a question under microbrewery. I guess I'll just explain it a little bit. When the planning board read this paragraph, it appears that a question came up, if you're doing wholesale of beer out of a facility, there is a chance that they may produce large quantities to distribute from that location, and how that might be considered impacting traffic, hours of operation, the trucks coming in to pick up those deliveries, and then taking them to distribute. So it seemed like maybe that could happen, and it wasn't considered. There's no restriction or anything. It's open that that could happen.
It's considered because it's a special permit use.
Sorry?
It is considered because it's a special permit use. So through the special permit process, of course, by law, the planning board can consider those impacts. But you wouldn't put that kind of stuff in the definition. The definition is simply, what is it? Not how, so that's why it's a special permit use.
So a microbrewery is a special permit use regardless of how, how large the establishment is?
Well, it would have to conform to the dimensional regulations in the district.
Correct, but it's not a by right use, right?
That's correct.
So you're saying it would go to special permit, and that's where it would be dictated what they could do for loading?
Correct.
Or parking, or hours of operation, which would be under the control of the planning board through a special, through the special permit?
Correct.
Chairman Morris?
Marty?
Yeah, I would just suggest we strike that last sentence. In addition to selling beer, I'd say just remove that sentence. It's a special permit anyway, and we can certainly discuss it. If a microbrewery decides to come to town, we can certainly discuss that under special permit. I'd rather just not have anything in here about a wholesaler in a definition.
So strike the sentence that says, "in addition to selling beer"?
Correct. That's my recommendation.
Any comments on that?
Judy, you feel that-
We'll take those notes, the, again, the EDC and the, the selectmen have to have to agree to the final wording. We're just trying to facilitate this.
This is Julie. I, I'm, I think I'm okay with that. My only thought was, again, you know, if this is, you know, going back to the fact that this is a definition of a microbrewery, if, Judy, I'm wondering if you think this is just what a microbrewery is defined as, and then, so leave, leave it in there, and then obviously, you, you know, regulate it when you go through the special permit process. Does it make sense to, to leave it in there, or is it, I mean, I don't, I don't think that it hurts us to take it out, but, but I would love your input on that.
Well, it is a standard definition of a microbrewery.
Yeah.
Well, I certainly suggest that you don't want to remove the reference to a valid brewery license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that's what you're doing by taking that sentence out.
Thank you.
Move on to the next one, mixed use.
So can I just clarify, Don, from my notes, that we would leave this in as a comment for now? That that wouldn't be a change? Like, I'm not sure how to proceed here, because we're getting two sides, and I don't know, we're going to follow what the EDC is calling for?
But your note would be to leave it as it is, ending in the word "Massachusetts," or to delete that sentence? That's the result of the discussion. Final, final version would be, would come from the EDC.
Okay. Can I actually ask, yeah, just another point of clarity. If the planning board is actually suggesting that this is something we're moving forward with, it is my perspective that the planning board should be in alignment with what the wording is, because we have to be the ones to enforce it and use this when we discuss special permits of by right. So I thought this whole purpose was to say, we write what we are comfortable with. And then if it goes to town meeting floor and someone wants to argue about it, that's fine, but I would prefer to have this out.
This is Julie.
Okay, please, back on.
It's, it's fine. So obviously, Marty, I think what the board's take, and I'm sure EDC's take from this tonight is as well, is, is taking the feedback, taking clarification from Judy on things, if there is clarification, and then, you know, all of us having a discussion again, you know, before we come up with the final document. Obviously, the goal of the board and EDC is, is that we can come to a document to bring to town meeting that, you know, we can all support to some level. I, I think that's ultimately the goal. So if you feel strongly about that, that's certainly something that Julie will bring back to EDC, and I'll bring back to the Board of Selectmen as well. It's just, it's, I don't want to speak for the board tonight, because the board isn't here and the board hasn't discussed it. So I, I guess, all I can say to you is, is, is my goal in being here is to, you know, allow Judy to answer some of the questions, you know, that the planning board was looking for, and then for EDC and the Board of Selectmen to take the feedback and, you know, discuss it ourselves. I don't know if that was helpful, but that's kind of our path forward.
Okay, so just the one point of clarity, and I know Judy's time is very limited. So this is, the EDC and Selectmen suggested bylaw that's going through a town planning board channel, correct? It's not a planning board recommended bylaw. Will, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That, that provides clarity for me.
I mean, obviously, the, the goal, Marty, has been to try to find something that we can all find common ground on, you know? I think the town benefits better, better that way. So, yes.
But Marty's point, that if there is language in there that is a, creates a great difficulty to the planning board in implementing and enforcing the code, then we, we would have to stand up and say, no, we can't, we can't accept that. But I don't think we're at that point, especially with this one, where Judy recommended the reference to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But we'll see how, how this moves, moves forward. We need to keep moving. Mixed use.
So here, the comment was that the intent of gross floor area used here with the current zoning definition that already existed. And it looks like, Judy, you said that you, you were aware of that definition, and there's no reason to define it further. That definition was fine in this context.
I, I, yeah, that was my sense.
Comments? Questions?
I think the second part of this paragraph was a bigger concern. Where did the 10% come from and why no maximum? And maybe the planning board members who had that question could quickly clarify if it, if the answer doesn't hit that point from Judy. So does the planning board remember who had a question on this? Where did the 10% come from and why no maximum?
So I've never seen one with a maximum. I've never seen any reason to set a maximum. As for the minimum, there's been a lot of research on this, both within Massachusetts and nationally, and what we're finding is that, that setting, setting, setting any requirement really runs the risk of making these projects hard to do. They're a lot harder to do than people realize. It takes a special developer to do one of these projects. So if you think about what the real intent is, at least to those of us in the planning world, it's not about the commercial tax revenue or anything. This is about a type of building where you have, you have residences and commercial space together, and the commercial space needs to face the street. That's kind of the whole point. So as long as you can place the commercial uses in the building, where they're going to have the impact you seek, which is encouraging pedestrian activity and life on the, on the street, that's the point. It doesn't matter what the percentage of the commercial space is. It's where it's located and what it does for the project as a whole.
So I think, Karina, I think that was my question, because, you know, we've seen a lot of creative ways with developers coming in and, you know, concerned if someone came in and said, okay, well, put a barber shop on the first floor, and then the rest of it'll just become a a development or a residential building, basically. But you're saying, Judy, that doesn't happen?
I'm saying what matters is where the commercial space goes, not how much of it. How much, not, not how much of the total floor area in the building is commercial. It's where the commercial space is located.
Judy, I just wanted to, this is Julie, I just wanted to add one more thing that I recall came up in discussion when we were talking about this. If, if there is a mixed-use project, and there, you know, obviously, as EDC, we were looking for retail on the first floor. However, you know, i- if there is residential in other portions of the building, would it be helpful to have potentially a handicapped accessible unit on the first floor in the back or, or something like that? So I think that was another issue that came up as far as providing a little bit of flexibility there to potentially have some first-floor living.
And to Julie's point, that is why a lot of commercial, why, why a lot of mixed-use bylaws today don't prohibit residential space on the ground floor. Because in a very small mixed-use building, you know, it just, it just is too difficult to try to make it an elevator building. So if you have units on the first floor, perhaps accessible from the side or rear of the building, then you have a way to provide disability access units.
So is it my, is my understanding correct, Andrew, that the concern was that if it's supposed to be all residential on the second floor and commercial only- commercial only on the first floor? Or that wasn't the concern? Okay.
I think I'm good.
Okay.
Sarah, let's move on.
That was just a formatting question on part K there.
We'll figure that out.
That's an easy one.
Okay.
So down to number two there.
Yep.
So I think this was Mimi Luttrell's question, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, this is my question. So my understanding was the, the reason the EDC started down this path was to allow mixed use development by right. But the way I read this, a mixed use development is a mix of residential and non-residential uses is allowed by right, except for there are no residential uses that are allowed by right. So in essence, you can only do a mixed use by special permit.
No, because the definition provides for the inclusion of residential space.
Say that one more time, Judy, please.
But it says, under this section A or B, each use in the development is permitted use under section 140, 174 8.12A or 174 8.12B, and there aren't residential uses in either one of those sections.
A mixed use building must have residential space.
But so wouldn't it make more sense to have an allowed use multifamily housing up to four units or something if, if within a mixed use development?
No, because multifamily is a different use.
Would it clarify to say, mixed use development provided that each non-residential use in the development is permitted use under this section?
If you want to say that, you can.
Mimi, does that answer your question, or?
I, I, to me, it's still unclear.
Even with the recommendation that Julie just made? Or Julie, can you repeat that?
Sure. Mixed use development provided that each non-residential use in the development is a permitted use under this section? So residential, per the definition, mixed use is residential with commercial. So here, mixed use is permitted, provided that any use that's not the residential component is one of those listed uses.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Mimi, you don't look clear on that still. I, I don't want to move away from this until, till you're good. This was an important piece for you in the earlier discussions. I'm sorry, Don, I, I don't mean to jump in, and I'm, I'm not trying to run your meeting.
You're doing a lot better job than I am, Lisa.
I apologize.
I, well, I'm just one member, but it would, it would, it would offer more clarity to me if there was a residential use in those sections.
Yeah, and the only way I can respond to that, Mimi, is if you don't have a residential, you don't have residential units in the building, it's not a mixed use project.
Right, which is why I was confused by.
But that's what the definition is. The definition is residential and commercial mix. So you can't get a mixed use building without residential space, and you don't want to use the term multifamily because it's a different use.
Well, not in our definition of multifamily. Which is, you know, more than one dwelling unit in a building. Okay, we can, we can move on. I'll, uh.
I defer to you guys on the EDC on this. I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to complicate this more. So if you feel like you want to do something else, that's really up to you guys.
Mimi, could you draft something or, or shoot me something that gives the clarity that you're looking for? And then, you know, we can certainly discuss it. Judy, how much longer do you have before you have to go? I don't want to.
Four minutes.
Four minutes. Okay, I'll be quiet. Don, go.
No, it's okay. I mean, why don't you, you know, Karina, I appreciate what you're doing going through these one at a time. I guess I'm just wondering if there's sort of big things in here that we need to talk about before I sign off. Do you want to jump around a little, or do you want to just keep going the way you are? Whatever's going to work better for you.
I feel like this isn't working. I think that we're taking steps to try and understand this, and if it's not clear to an experienced planning board that these questions need to just have a little bit more time for clarity. So perhaps a time when you or you could come back and, and we could spend a little more time than, or maybe we just do a section or something at a time, but I feel like these questions are, you know, from experienced planning board members are, where, and, and I'm, you know, a town planner. Some of these are just not clear, and if, if it's not clear to us, how would it be clear to the public? And I'm worried about that because we want a successful amen, you know, proposal here.
So I would just say this. I think the best thing to do is to have a work session, which would be a much, something I can manage. That would be a daytime appointment, perhaps with you and the chair and somebody from the EDC. My nights are just booked. It's why I have to sign off on you now, but.
Okay, and I, I want to defer to Don because I don't want to take over, but that's my impression standing here, because we've all spent time looking at this and going over it, and we need a solution, but, and it's not my call. It's just, that was my observation.
Sure. I, I, within reason, I'll, 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 I'll try to work with you on this. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's been through multiple drafts, it's been through a legal review, and I, I'm not sure how much more I can do to help you, but if it will help you folks in the EDC Select Board, I'm happy to schedule a work session sometime during the day with, you know, a member from each group.
That sounds good, a work session.
Okay, Don, and maybe we can actually bring Adam Costa into that work session as well.
Right. That would be a really good idea.
That's what we'll do.
Okay, so we'll, Karina, we'll, we'll get with you and we'll, we'll certainly schedule that.
Okay.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Yes, sir. Bye-bye.
All right, Mr. Chair, are you going to continue on this? Because I have to pop out to another meeting, but I know Julie is still here. And I believe Marty is here as well, the Chair of the Board. So if you want to, sorry, go ahead.
No, what I'd like to do is go back to, to suspend the downtown and put it back in its order and go back and finish up with the site plan, with the public hearing on site plan approval. It seemed like there wasn't a whole lot of action, and if there's not, then we'll vote to continue that and then move our way down in order. And then the downtown, unless, unless otherwise more people want to do it a different way, but I just think that
You have a, a couple of people who have their hand raised, Don, so I don't know if you wanted them to speak now or when you come back to this item, but Marty.
Let me ask the board what they want to do. Do you want to go back to site plan, or do you want to finish up on downtown?
I think we're on downtown. I, let's just finish it up.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, we'll stay with downtown. Sarah, hands.
Uh, yep, so Marty has his hand up, so I'm going to allow him to speak. Marty, you're, you should be all set.
I'm all set to speak?
Yes, please.
All right, great, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be too upset, Don. It is like the fourth time I put my hand up before you recognize me, but, but I'm used to that, so.
I don't see the hand, so.
Um, I, I think the suggestion, I mean, I looked through the, uh, the questions that were raised at the, I guess it was the most recent planning board meeting. And, you know, questions seem reasonable, particularly if, if you hadn't been part of the, the meetings in the fall. I thought Judy, in a relatively short amount of time, turned around, answers, I mean, again, I had been at the meetings in the fall. I understood most of them. Um, I, I think the idea of, of thrashing out with Judy gone, um, I mean, you're welcome to do it. It sounds like, and, and Julie, probably Julie Connolly is probably a lot more comfortable answering these questions than I am. I, I just think it might be a better use of everybody's time, particularly since on the, on the Board of Selectmen's March 2 agenda, we are likely to set a town meeting date sometime in early June. So, I mean, I know that, that Judy Barrett had a limited amount of time tonight, and the entire, just listening from here, the discussion felt rushed, rushed, because everybody realized she was going to be out of here at eight o'clock. Um, and she, obviously, from the drafting standpoint, is the person with the most expertise. So I'm fine staying on and thrashing through the additional comments. I think from the Board of Selectmen perspective, an awful lot of it is, we'll touch base with the entire board, we'll talk with Judy and get back to you. It just might be a more efficient way to do, do it, to have the working session you're describing, see which issues can be resolved in that setting, and which ones need a more fulsome discussion with your board, and then maybe our board and, and the EDC, depending on how it plays out. Anyway, that's just my thought.
Excellent. Thank, thank you, Marty. Who else, who else do we have, Sarah?
We also have Kevin Miller. Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Could you state your address for us, please?
I live at 18 Latos Quama.
Thank you.
Uh, I was on the Select, Board of Selectmen call last week and raised this issue, and I'll raise it again here because I did not receive really an answer. You know, a, a lot of my fellow citizens of the town raised some, you know, very valid points about stormwater drainage, sewage, traffic, light pollution issues. My question had to do with where all zoning matters begin, which is the map. And the really problematic nature of the, the proposed district. When I asked the question what the map was based on, and I, you know, don't want to mischaracterize what was said. What was reported was that Julie Connolly of the EDC said that the, the map was based on an old map. It was the current zoning map, and that if she had drawn the map, it would have been done differently. Which begs the question, if you're going to zone, it, we're going through all this stuff, and I, you know, I just listened to a half an hour of arguing about, you know, the definition of sides and what a microbrewery, you know, constitutes, which is a little bit like arguing about wallpaper and paint colors and what the definition of wallpaper is when you don't have a foundation. The foundation is the map. If you look at the map, and I refer to the document that was distributed to a Butters on page, uh, you know, the map that's shown, I believe that's page 10. No, I'm sorry, it's a little further in, but you know where the map is. It shows the boundaries of this district, incorporating, for example, only half of the property at 5 Park Street, which is currently a commercial business. It's the, the garage, cutting through backyards at 10, 12, 14 Latos Quama, and finally extending all the way to the terminus of Foley Drive, which is a full quarter of a mile, one quarter of a mile from Main Street. What the possible purpose of a district that encompasses, you know, some of the land that it encompasses is absolutely beyond me. And why, as a fundamental baseline, this is where we start issue, the map itself wasn't addressed, is a, a complete, completely mystifying. It opens the door, particularly with this by right business, to all kinds of uses that the zoning board and the Selectmen cannot possibly anticipate, but I guarantee you developers will. And until the question can be answered, why the planning board and the Board of Selectmen and the EDC want to push this zone so deep into landlocked territory without any possible reasonable explanation? I, I mean, it just makes this proposal frankly dead on arrival. And you, you can't bicker about, you know, the, how the art gallery that, that's going to be downtown, and which I would love to see, along with the ice cream shop and the microbrewery, you can't bicker about the arcana of those definitions without first getting the map straight in, in a way that doesn't seem like something is being concealed from townspeople and a Butters out of a refusal to address the fundamental issue that all zoning begins with the map. So that's about all I've got.
Kevin, I, I was at the forum, at the forum with the Selectmen the other day, and I, I listened to you bring that up. And I, I guess I haven't seen the map that you're looking at, but this afternoon, the town planner and I had a discussion about the map. And it wasn't the, necessarily the map that you're looking at, but it was the concept of, I had asked her if she had heard anybody within the district or nearby or far away make any comments relative to adding properties to the district or deleting properties?
Well, I, I'm, I'm making that suggestion, and I'm making it based on the documents that the town distributed to my front door, the EDC Downtown Initiative. And that's the map that I'm referring to. I don't know one, what one you're looking at, but that's the one I'm looking at. And it's the big purple zone on the green field, and it shows the entirety of the district, and it is a grotesque overreach, unless there are motives here that are not being revealed to a Butters.
So that's an area that in, in the next coming hearings, we should get cleared up, which is the official zoning map of the town compared to what you have or what was distributed to you, and make sure they're the same. And then the, the, the matter of, if somebody feels that a, a portion of what is officially in the current downtown village district should be altered, then we should take a look at that. Because.
Well, I, again, I, I'm a little bit gobsmacked that, 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 that there's an indication that the, that the map that was officially distributed by the town, by the South Row Economic Development Committee, that Ms. Quinn, I believe, is looking at right now. Yeah, and holding up for the camera, that's the map. That, that's not the map that you folks are working on. Like, I don't see how you can be arguing about language about various by right usage when there can't be some consensus on the map. I mean, I, I, I live full disclosure adjacent to this zone, and I look out on this map, and I, you know, i- if you expect me to get behind this and my neighbors to get behind this, this map has to make some kind of sense, and right now it doesn't. And what I'm saying to you, with all due respect and all appreciation for what you're trying to do, and in fact, supporting downtown development, y- y- you, you, you can't argue about the fine details of the rhetoric of various, you know, line items, of facades until the map has gotten straight. And, you know, my understanding is that this map is based on some old, it, it appears to be a, 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 a map based on 19th century uses, 19th century density and 19th century modes of transportation. I, I don't see how pushing a quarter of a mile down Park Street to where it actually, Park Street doesn't even exist in, into a landlocked area is, is likely to win support of the people that surround the district because it, it clearly, it, it, it hasn't been addressed as a fundamental issue. I don't, I just don't understand zoning that doesn't offer up a map that makes sense. I mean, and if you just want to take one simple example, would be number 5 Park Street, where half of that. Where half of that property, which is currently a commercial garage is included in the district and the other half of the property is not. It simply doesn't make sense.
Think you made your point, Kevin. Let's move on and see what I'm in agreement with you that the map has to be accurate and that it is fully available for revision. Anyone else, Sarah?
Yes, Marika has her hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. I'm sorry. I'm, my name is Marika Munsef. I'm the EDC Coordinator. I'm also a resident of South Road. My address is 92 Sears Road. I just wanted to comment that the map, we only have one map, which is the current map of the Business Village District in downtown. So this is the same map, the map that was distributed in the information packet is the same map that is on the zoning map on the town website. So I'm surprised that the chairman is not aware of the map of the downtown Business Village District. Because we never changed any boundaries of the map. We, the EDC set out to change, make some changes to the zoning. Initially, we're going to make some changes to the current downtown Business Village District. And throughout this process, things happened and it was decided that we would create a new district, but we would not change the zoning map. That was considered to be too much of a, you know, a change because that would mean we would have to ask, you know, people to to be added on to a commercial district, et cetera. So, you know, everyone who is currently in the downtown Business Village District will be, if this goes ahead, will be part of the downtown district, which is a lot of things would stay the same and and the whole purpose of this zoning, this new district is to update the zoning uses and allow for some limited by right uses. And I just wanted to add to that, these by right uses are still need to adhere to the performance standards or the development standards that are also part of this bylaw. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Sarah?
Do not see any additional hands raised at this time. We have 17 attendees.
I'd like to ask the board their opinion relative to the map.
Don, you asking our board? Are you asking EDC?
No, the planning board.
Okay. I mean, I see Mr. Miller's point, right, that if if we're going to make an update and we're talking about by right options that, you know, uses, options that develop developers are going to be able to do. Going down almost a fully, you know, behind Park, Park Street and everything, it doesn't doesn't register for me either. You know, and, you know, but from what we agreed earlier, this, my understanding is this is a selectman EDC request for changes, we're facilitating. And that would be in, I guess, up to them if they want to change it or not. Per what we said earlier this evening. Correct?
But you're not opposed to revising the boundaries of the district?
I'm not opposed to, no, like especially with some of these by right, I think should only be by right if you're on Main Street or, you know, Route 30 or, you know, along there. I don't, I don't see why you should have by right to do mixed use touching fully drop. That doesn't, that doesn't register with me either.
Anything else, Andrew?
That's, nope, I'm good.
Jesse, opinion?
100% agree with Mr. Miller. The only reason that I hadn't gotten into this was the only copy of the map that's being referenced that I've seen as part of the design guidelines, which we really hadn't even delved into yet. So, but no question that the boundaries need to be addressed.
Mimi?
Yeah, I also agree with Mr. Miller and I know that I spent a lot of time with Karina trying to figure out why there were all these half lots and why the Village Business District in that downtown area extended down past the end of Park Street on a right of way of the railroad. And we couldn't figure out why, why it was drawn that way, but it certainly doesn't make any sense to have, you know, half lots on Latas Squama, either, you know, Resident Residential A or in this downtown district. I thoroughly agree with what Mr. Miller had to say.
And Marnie?
Yeah, I thoroughly agree with my fellow planning board members and I completely agree with Mr. Miller's comment as I'm looking at the website, town website and the zoning map. It's very disturbing that it goes right through people's lots on Latas Squama. And so, yeah, I agree that by right is very concerning for mixed use. So I think we'd need to redraw. I don't know what that process is.
Well, can anyone confirm that what's on the town website is accurate? Does, you know, we have the GPS. You can go on GPS on the town website.
The GIS.
And, go ahead, Karina.
Yeah, Marnie, if you're referring to the link to the zoning map. Yep. That is dated 2006. In which it shows three Business Village District areas. One being the Business Village District that encompasses the downtown area. And I believe for clarification, that the downtown district that's being proposed is supposed to be that Business Village District exactly that is in the downtown area. So the outline is the same. On the zoning map on the town website, it's dated 2006, which I think it is. That's the current zoning map that's filed with the town clerk. And the BV District as it currently stands in downtown area does cross property lines on its perimeters in different areas, as Mr. Miller said on Park Street, Latas Squama. And, you know, that hasn't, I'm not sure that's been addressed in the proposed bylaw because if this district, downtown district bylaw does get approved at town meeting, the zoning map will have to be updated to reflect that that downtown area that is currently Business Village District will become the downtown district. So it will have to take a different color. It'll have to be added to the list of districts on the map. Et cetera. So a map, that zoning map will have to be updated. The GIS maps that Don is referring to is another way to look at the parcels in detail. You can go to the GIS map and zoom into this location and you can see the individual parcels, the ownership, the dimensions of the parcels, et cetera. You can also see the zone there. So that's another reference. And that's what I can clarify at this point, but there are lots that are halfway in the residential zone and half in the BV District, Business Village District right now in that downtown area.
So it sounds like the planning board is all in agreement that the the zoning district lines, regardless of whether it's stays the downtown village district or we move on to the downtown district. It seems like there's work to be done on the district boundaries. Any more questions or comments on that? We got a long way to go here tonight.
We do have a couple of hands raised. Mr. Healy has his hand raised again. And also Julie Connolly. So, Mr. Healy, you all set?
Whoever has the hand up, yeah?
Yep, he should be all set.
Marnie, are you there?
All set?
Am I there?
Yes.
There's too many buttons to push. I just, I just don't think, again, I'm only one member of the Board of Selectmen. I don't think that cleaning up the the map to put full lots rather than half lots, to take out lots that don't belong in a business district, I don't think that's controversial at all. Again, the district is drawn is the one that was used for the changes. If there's an appetite, and it sounds like there is, for doing two different things here, number one, updating the zoning nomenclature and number two, narrowing in some respects, maybe widening in other respects, the exact contours of the district. Again, I can't imagine that there's going to be much resistance, if any, in the Board of Selectmen. I can't speak for the EDC. But, you know, cleaning that up seems secondary to getting the the details right about the zoning language.
I think that the public, the people whose lots are impacted by that would have probably a lot, you know, what side of the fence they're on. You know, depending on how it impacts them, in which direction they go zone wise. Obviously.
Okay, Julie, are you all set?
Yes, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I fully agree with Marty and when we started this process and we started talking to the, with the planning board back a couple of years ago, you know, our, our angle with it was, you know, what, what sort of uses, what sort of, you know, how can we encourage a little bit of revitalization of downtown? To be frank, you know, we never really considered changing the zoning map at that point. We were focused on, you know, what do we want this main street to look like and, you know, what sort of restrictions are appropriate, what sort of uses do we want to encourage? And, and as far as Mr. Miller's comment, yeah, I, you know, I certainly wasn't meaning to be flippant when I said the other day or last week that, you know, this isn't how I would have drawn it. It's not how I would have drawn it and I, you know, without speaking for the board, I can't imagine we'd be opposed to 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 changing it either to make that more comfortable. I, I understand if, you know, if it was my lot that was split and potential uses were changing, I would maybe be concerned as well. So I personally have no position to that. I would encourage my board also to probably to not be opposed to that. So again, it just, that that piece of it was not on our radar, not because, and I understand the point that, you know, it's foundational, but, you know, we were thinking of what uses can we change downtown, not, and we, you know, we never at the beginning point discussed changing the map. You know, we're trying to keep changes as minimal as possible, but in light of this conversation, I'm absolutely not opposed to it.
Well, I think what I heard Marty say was that the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, but I thought you said that the the district boundaries was secondary to getting the language right. And I think what Mr. Miller was saying was that getting the boundaries of the district was primary, was the most important thing. I guess regardless, we have to, we could take a parallel track and work on both at the same time. Do the best we can with it. But it certainly needs to be addressed. Any other questions or comments? Is Marty? Did Marty want to say something?
None that I see. He still has the permission to talk, so.
Chairman Morris, it's Marnie. I do have one just question or clarifying comment.
Oh, sure. Just jump in, Marnie.
So just to provide clarity, this is again, Board of Selectmen and EDC will take the stab at this and then we'll come back to have the conversation. But is that correct?
Believe so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any suggestions on how we continue along with this public hearing? Or if we've had enough for for tonight and we continue the public hearing to March 8?
I think we got a lot to chew on if we want to continue it to March 8.
So hearing, hearing no more comments or questions and let's entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing to, is there a time, Karina, that you would recommend keep it in the same order or?
Yes, it should be at 7:30 PM.
For the motions to continue this public hearing for downtown district to 7:30 on March 8. That right?
That's correct.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Trelle, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
We'll see you on March 8. Now that means we return back to the suspended portion of the public hearing for Section 174-10 site plan approval. This is Luttrell had explained the revisions that the language of the article was on the screen. Is that where we want to pick up?
Yes, and I had talked about the planning board report that had been done at the prior, yep.
And that the article hadn't, the wording of the article hadn't changed.
It had not. And we had not, we've not received any, but I'm aware of public input emails or letters at this point.
Are there any questions or comments from the public?
No, I don't see any. We are down to seven attendees and I don't see any hands raised for this particular warrant article.
Any questions or comments from the board, planning board? Town Planner? Mr. Mills?
Make a motion. We continue the public hearing until March 8.
Second. Votions are made and seconded. Karina, should we do a different sequence? No, let's, I, all right, so we'll make this one 7:10?
This one will be 7:15. Because we have the Mount Vickery subdivision.
Yeah, at 7:10.
Our intent was to put the anticipated longer public hearings towards the end of these four as opposed to upfront. But now if we don't have a lot of response, it could be switched, I suppose.
Okay.
It's up to you.
So what time do we want to continue this? So what time do we want to continue this to?
So we should probably continue this in the order we have until next meeting, so 7:30. What do you think?
Didn't we just continue the downtown to 7:30?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. No, it's 7:15. My apologies. The site plan approval warrant article would be 7:15. So continue, motion to continue to March 8th, 2021 at 7:15 PM for the Section 174-10 site plan approval zoning bylaw amendment. And I think we had a, a motion and a, and a second already.
We did. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
We'll see you on March 8th. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, town meeting warrant article to amend 174-9 special permit requirements and 174-19 extensions or alterations. Will ask the Town Planner to read the public hearing notice.
Okay, this is the public hearing notice for the town of Southborough pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, February 22nd, 2021, beginning at 7:15 PM via remote Zoom meeting in accordance with orders issued by the governor during the current state of emergency. This meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. For 7:20 PM, we have the annual town meeting warrant article to amend Section 174-9 special permit requirements in Section 174-19 extensions or alterations zoning bylaw to reflect current case law. The revisions are intended to provide additional clarity regarding non-conforming structures. Copy of the proposed language can be viewed by appointment in the Zoning Board of Appeals office at 9 Cordial Road, Southborough, Mass. 01772. All documents can also be viewed at the Planning Board website at www.southboroughtown.com/planning-board. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should appear at the time and place designated. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this particular article is pretty straightforward. Just making sure that the, there's further clarity for 174-9 in terms of reconstruction or structural changes being added there. And then taking out a reference to Chapter 93 or 93D. That was actually a question that Aldo, Town Council, opined on. And he said that it would be appropriate to strike that particular reference because it's not under the jurisdiction of the ZBA. And then again, down in 174-19, adding, you know, that reconstruction or structural changes to make sure that there's that clarity there. And, you know, further referencing 40, Massachusetts General Law 40A, Section 6 for that update. So those are the major changes there. None of this language has been changed since the original public hearings last year.
Which was also reviewed by Town Council. And then we also had a Planning Board report culminate out of the prior, prior planning, public hearings in which the Planning Board voted unanimously at the time to support this article.
Is there anyone from the ZBA present?
Yes.
David Williams, who's current Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe that's him, Sarah?
Yep. David, you're all set to speak.
Good evening. This is David Williams, Chairman of the Zoning Board.
Good evening, David. Welcome.
Thanks, Don. So Katie did invite me to attend the meeting. She, it was just to the review of this, this section. I think, you know, it's been covered pretty thoroughly. It really is, in my view, just cleaning up the language to more closely reflect what, you know, comes before us where there are, you know, non-conforming, existing non-conforming issues that are, that are being proposed. So I, you know, the ZBA has reviewed it and I think we were all in favor of it.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the public tonight?
I do not see any hands raised in the attendees.
Make a motion. Make a motion to continue the public hearing to March 8th at 7:25 PM.
Second.
That would be 7:20 PM, just to clarify.
Oh, 7:20 PM.
Sorry.
Votions are made and seconded to continue the public hearing for 174-9 and 174-19, March 8th at 7:25 PM.
7:20.
Oh, 7:20.
Yeah.
We'll get it.
It's tough, this forum.
Any questions or comments, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Okay, we'll see you on March 8th. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a warrant article for updating Section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination. Will ask the Town Planner to read the public hearing notice.
This is the public hearing notice, town of Southborough. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, February 22nd, 2021, beginning at 7:15 PM via remote Zoom meeting. In accordance with orders issued by the governor during the current state of emergency, this meeting will be held virtually. No in-person attendance by the public. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. For 7:25 PM, annual town meeting warrant article to update Section 174-12.1 Outdoor Illumination zoning bylaw. The revision is intended to replace the current bylaw entirely. A copy of the proposed language can be reviewed by appointment in the Planning Board office at 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772. All documents can also be viewed online at www.southboroughtown.com/planning-board. Any person wishing to be heard on this proposed language should appear at the time and place designated. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board. That's it.
Thank you. And the, same as the other articles, there was a report, a vote. You have this one, Sarah, right?
I do, I do. So, and, you know, this one has obviously got a lot of meat to it. So, yes, the, the public hearings, like, like the others, opened last January, on January 27th, 2020. And were, you know, held in much discussion. Aldo actually opined two different opinions regarding specifically the applicability section. Currently, the applicability section within this draft does not change significantly from the current bylaw. It only adds, including application to single and two-family homes on the recommendation that Aldo gave. Because in his opinion, he did, he did state that this bylaw currently applies to single and two-family residential lots. So.
And it was to clarify. So it was specifically, specifically called out in the revised bylaw that's proposed, so that it was clear.
Correct. Thank you. And so the Board of Selectmen, I'm just going to go down to enforcement. I'm trying to hit the kind of highlights here. The Board of Selectmen met last year on, right around this time, on February 25th, 2020. And they discussed the current, you know, bylaw as it was written. And this enforcement section, you know, was detailed in terms of how the bylaw would be enforced. They suggested to strike the the current language as it was written then and to put in this bolded language referencing the code 174-24, which is the use regulations, which talks about enforcement. And so that was going to be, that came out through the public hearing process and that change at that point was going to be made on the, on the public hearing at the, at the annual town meeting on the floor. Because it was after the warrant had gone to print for the anticipated meeting for last year. So, you know, between then and now, there has been some, some issues with, you know, enforcement and light trespass. So I know that the working group met on Friday to kind of, you know, talk again about, you know, this article and bringing it back to public hearing and wanted to, to give some more attention to this enforcement section, kind of moving forward. And.
And this bylaw also comes with rules and regulations for outdoor illumination.
Yes, yes. And those, those rules and regulations are posted on the Planning Board website. And those are, you know, ongoing in terms of revision and making sure that those are ready to support this warrant article if it passes. So those are the major, I think, points to kind of discuss this evening to get us started again in reviewing this bylaw.
Chairman Morris?
Marty?
Yeah, so as part of the working group, working with Sarah and Dustin, we plan to make some additional changes. But I gotta say, coming through the EDC Board of Selectmen and their suggested revisions and how we did go through by, you know, point by point, I don't think it's a bad idea that this Planning Board do the same thing with this lighting bylaw. Because I think there is, you know, we need to be able to interpret it. And I think going through that experience, I learned a lot. I feel like I know this inside and out, but I also would like to make sure that Andrew, Jessie, Mimi, and you, Dawn, are all very clear on what we're proposing. Because it is a, you know, it's a shift from, you know, how they used to measure to a very, the bug system. It's a very different system. So I do want to make sure that if we do proceed, this goes onto town floor. It gets approved in a, you know, positive way that we all are understanding how to actually interpret and leverage this.
So what is your suggestion, Marty, that we have another page-by-page review of this with, with the, the board and the public?
That would be my suggestion, not tonight, because I had raised my hand to make some alterations specific to that enforcement section. And I think we wanted to make additional changes. So once that happened, I don't know if we'd want to do it in a full-on board meeting or if the board would be receptive to maybe planning an alternative meeting to be able to do that. Because I do think it should be just a focused attention meeting.
So if we, if we do it at the next public hearing, well, actually, yeah, if we do it at the next public hearing, then the public would, would have to endure us going through it. And if we included the public comments on our discussions and revisions, it would take a long, long time.
This is a robust document, yes.
You're suggesting that we have a Planning Board working session. It would be a public meeting outside of the public hearing.
Yeah.
So would that mean we'd have to have another meeting between now and March 8th? Or do we continue this? Do we continue this? Well, the last time we had the meeting, the extra meeting that we had, I think we did it in two hours. And that was about 13 or 14 pages that we went through. This is how many pages?
Eight.
It's eight.
But that's just the, the text of the code.
Right. And this includes all of our tract changes. So the original bylaws in there, and you can see our cross-out, so I do think that's helpful. So it is probably like five and a half if we kind of go through that. But I do think it's really important for this board to make sure you know what you're reading.
Let me ask the board what they think. Mr. Mills?
I'm, I'm fine with having a separate meeting and we just pound it out if it's specific to this.
Mr. Stein?
Okay.
Mrs. Latrell?
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea. I think the, when we did it with the, the downtown bylaw, it was helpful.
This reminds me of the earlier days when I was on the Planning Board and we used to meet every single week. Then one year we had like 35, 37 meetings. But that's what we're here for. So did you want to have this before March 8th? What's our next meeting after March 8th?
After March 8th? We did have one tentatively scheduled on that, the 20th of March, which was going to be the annual town meeting, but March 22nd. So March 8th and then March 22nd.
I'll try to do one between now and March 8th?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, wouldn't we want to do this a little bit closer to town meeting? Rather than try to squeeze another meeting in between now and March 8th?
Marty?
So the challenge is, Jessie, is that isn't there something that we have to close or goes to print? I don't know whether we're going to print, but they basically said in the end of March or whatever was the date that it went to print.
Well, this, this warrant article, if I'm not mistaken, was going to appear at a previous town meeting.
Right.
Yes.
So what, what changes do you anticipate this board making?
So there's, there's a piece on enforcement that we feel we need to clarify because there's, you know, a situation occurred in between, and so we have to be very clear around enforcement and who actually is the person who enforces. So I think we wanted to add that clarity in here as well as in the rules and regulation document.
Okay. Thanks for explaining it.
But Marty, I think, I think the point when it goes to print has to do with when they actually set town meeting. And I think I heard Marty say that it was going to be early July, so we might have more time. Going off what I heard from CPC and everything, so we might have a little bit more wiggle room.
So I guess that's the question is when this goes to print? Because I think ideally when it goes to print is that we wouldn't have any additional changes. And so I don't know what that means when it goes to print. When our town meetings aren't going to be until When our town meetings aren't going to be until June.
Once it goes to print, Marty, any changes to the document have to be done on the town floor.
No, I understand that. But when's the print date?
Well, according to Dawn's explanation last week, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, it's based on. It's sooner than you think because the town. Voted that it would be the the town meeting is supposed to be the last Saturday in March at the latest. And the warrant has to be posted seven days before that. And just because you push the meeting date out, I think it has something to do with. The deadline of when the warrant has to be posted based on town code on on the code.
So Karina, I think we should just check with the town clerk because he told me that same thing. I think after he talked to Dawn. And there was going to be a mad scramble on the CPC if we had to get the, because that was going to mean all the warrant articles were going to do like next week, I think. So I think I think we should. I think it's been postponed because that was supposed to be discussed at the last Tuesday's meeting with the selectman. Clarified by Aldo. I think if we just get clarification on that and then. Maybe we can send out an email after that when we want to. Figure out to have this.
So I'll ask the town clerk to clarify. We'll ask the town clerk, what is the deadline for the warrant printing that we have to meet?
You comfortable with that, Dawn? Didn't mean to overstep.
Oh, no, you guys know more about it than I do at this point. So. Oh, that's fine. So maybe the idea would be to continue this public hearing to March eighth. And if we don't insert another meeting between now and then, then on March eighth, we'll do what we can with it if we have more information. And otherwise, we'll just see if anybody from the public wants to speak to it. If not, we'll continue it again and maybe insert a meeting between March eighth and whenever.
And Dawn, is it, it is, it's not. It's not prohibited to have a a planning board. Quorum to discuss something that's in public hearing as long as there's a quorum and it's open meeting law, correct?
Oh, yeah, it would be a public meeting, but it would be outside of the public hearing. I think that's legal.
Because the one with the. Downtown district was prior to the public hearing opening. So I just want to, okay, yeah. So this is just, it's like a working session that the planning board is going to meet and they post it because they're going to have a quorum.
It'd be a posted public meeting.
Okay.
But I guess the difference between. A public, the public meeting that we're anticipating. And the public hearing would be if when we post. Public meeting. We would have the ability to. Not accept. Comments from the public. As we would necessarily during the public hearing. We could still entertain. Public in a public meeting, but I think the rules are a little bit different than a public hearing.
Okay.
I think we'd have more latitude in the public meeting to stay focused on. Just the planning board members input and then make sure that that made its way to the public hearing. For everyone again to see and be allowed and expected to be allowed to comment. So it's a way of us to get an improved product for the for the public.
Yeah, that works well because the meetings are very full coming up with all this. Okay. So that would be.
Any more that you want to go through any more of the. Was it eight pages, six pages, six pages, eight pages?
Not personally, I mean, I'll defer to Marty, but basically, you know, the rest of the article kind of stands. The way that it was written. Last year.
Mr. Mills. Unmute. Is this the point in the meeting where we continue this public hearing?
Yeah, I make a motion we continue the public hearing for a warrant article. Update section one seven four dash twelve dot one outdoor illumination to March eighth at. Seven thirty PM.
So we continue.
I'm sorry.
Seven thirty five.
I'm just messed up tonight. Seven twenty five.
Seven twenty five.
Sorry about that.
So before we vote on this one. What time is our first public hearing on March eighth?
Seven, oh, at on March eighth, it's going to be. Seven oh five for the subdivision. Seven ten for Mount Vickery lid. Seven fifteen for the warrant article on the site plan approval. Seven twenty for the warrant article. By the ZBA on sections one seventy four dash nine, one seventy four nineteen, seven twenty five. For the outdoor illumination warrant article and seven thirty for the downtown district.
Motion's been made and seconded for continuing the outdoor illumination warrant article public hearing. To seven twenty five on March eighth. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
We'll see you on March eighth. Next item on the agenda is an approval not required. Zero Brigham Street and twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight, thirty Granual Road. Nice to tell planner to take us through this.
All right, Sarah, if you can put the A and R up on the screen. The planning department received an A and R application for zero Brigham Street and twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight and thirty Granual Road. You recall, I believe, in two thousand nineteen, maybe a little after. It was an A and R to. For. Twenty six Granual Road, which included the three lots. Thirty, twenty eight and number twenty six. So here is the A and R plan that was submitted with the application. And those three lots that Sarah has squared off there, in part, there's somewhat different here now, but those were A and R'd. Previously, and there was a big piece of land to the left was the remaining piece. Which is now being proposed to be divided into A and R lots consisting of lot four. Which is just left to the yellow box, lot five, six, seven, and a remaining piece way to the west. On Brigham Street. So the applicant is. Whitney Street Home Builders, who's part owner by Jim Vinicasa. And he may be in the audience. Let me see. He should be here. Yes, he is. So James Vinicasa is here to speak to his. A and R application. I want to say that I reviewed this with the applicant. Several times and he made modifications. Widening the lots, creating straighter lines, making them more palatable lot configurations. In order to, you know, maximize. What he can do there, but also accommodating that. Reducing any weird lot line configurations. I did check the circles, the seventy five foot diameter circles that have to pass from the frontage. To the rear setback without intersecting sidelines or the rear property lines. And I also checked that a seventy five foot circle diameter circle can pass forty percent. Along the frontage without intersecting the sidelines as well. And lastly, I want to point out that lot one R, which is the second lot from. The right. Extends from Granual Road up to Main Street to the north. If you can just. Pan down a little bit, Sarah, and you'll notice pan pan towards Main Street, the other direction. Yeah, you'll notice that that lot number one R is showing frontage on Main Street. So. That's what I have to say. Perhaps Jim Vinicasa wants to add something.
Thank you. No, I think you did a great job. You explained everything.
Thanks.
Karina, do you realize what you just did?
Yes, I did somebody else's work. Can't help it. I'm trying to make.
But you do it so well, you can't blame James for.
She she has been so much help through this this whole process and she's been so great to work with. Just want to compliment her and actually thank her for for everything she's done. It's been really good to work with with her.
Thanks, Jim.
We'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills, questions, comments?
Yeah, sir, can you just scroll down to Granville Road, I think it is again? Karina, can you? Those little triangles, there's two of them.
Yes.
Can you explain those?
Yes.
Or or the applicant, I don't want you to do the work for him.
I'm happy to tell you to.
Okay, go ahead, James.
So what we're really trying to accomplish is removing the lot lines over for the existing home, the existing home. The Connolly's did an amazing job. You know, bringing it back to, you know, restoring the home. And what we're trying to accomplish is basically slide the lot lines over. So. Sorry, so lot two R, which is Julie's house. Is actually giving some area over to twenty five. And then giving area, I'm sorry, is taking area from twenty five and giving area from twenty four. So it's just kind of moving the the frontage over. And what that's going to do is accomplish is the stone wall that was there. Although it's not, you know, a historical or we have to save it. We're trying to leave the exact same opening that the house had when it was built, you know, a long, long time ago. So we're kind of moving the lot lines, kind of shifting everything over a little bit just to give that to her.
Oh, I'm sorry. So those Z's and those those are the lines that are going away.
That's correct.
Going to be then, okay, that's what I didn't have my glasses on.
Yep, no, no problem.
All right. I'm also, thank you.
Mr. Stein.
No questions.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Just want to confirm, James, that the lot that has access on the frontage on Main Street has. Although I know that you're accessing the lot from the other side, but you you could access that lot from Main Street.
I mean. Yeah, I mean, it's, you have, you know, some wetlands and stuff in there, but. I guess technically could. Obviously, the house faces the other way, the garage, the address is off the granual.
Right. But our our frontage requires both. Legal and physical access. So just wanted to confirm that that.
Yes.
Could be possible.
It could.
Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan.
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. I went through this with the town planner earlier and. Once again, yeah, an excellent job. Anyone from the public, questions, comments?
I do not see any hands raised. We have four attendees at the moment.
Seeing none, Mr. Mills, motion to endorse the A and R.
Make a motion we endorse the A and R for zero Brigham Street and twenty four, twenty six, twenty eight, thirty Gilmore Road.
Granual.
Granual Road. As requested by the.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Jim.
Next item on the agenda is other business properly before the board, planners report.
All right, very briefly, I want to point out that Mimi and I worked on a letter to the Board of Selectmen regarding the public shade tree policy. That we were working on last fall. I'll send that around in an email. Tomorrow or the next day, so you can have a look at what will be submitted to the Board of Selectmen. And that was in support of consolidated public shade tree removal hearings on scenic roads. Next thing is. If you didn't have a chance, if you had any more comments on Sam Stivers' request regarding the complete streets project list. Just a reminder, if you have any feedback on that list, please get back to us or to Sam Stivers. And that is all I have for this evening.
I had a. A couple of. I guess comments on the tree letter. That we might be able to clean up tonight if we're able to, after we adjourn, keep Karina. Guess Sarah, because you're facilitating. And Mimi on, do you have the letter that we could put up on the screen for the three of us, four of us?
Yes.
All right, if that's all right with the board or with you guys. I I'd just like to make a couple of comments on that letter.
Then we could get it out.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda, we already approved the meeting minutes. The next meeting is March eighth. And that's about it for the agenda for tonight. Mr. Mills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.